I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dettelman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All the aldermen of the present, roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Yeah.
City Treasurer Hart. Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Maitritt. Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. Anissa McCaskill.
The following are excused: Dean Hart, Chief Clay, Deb Belleville, Chuck Schaefer, and Ken Vaughn. At this time, before I go into any of the direction or anything, let's ask you to please join me and stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the invisible, good liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing this evening, and before we start public participation, I just want to remind everyone, when we start public participation, please raise your hand. I will call on you. At that time, I would ask that you come to the center microphone and give your name, and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes. And we ask that you try to keep your comments based on the agenda, certainly city information, certainly business for sure. We ask that you make sure that all comments are kept civil and of good character, that we don't, as the, as the, if you have a agenda in front of you, it explains, to make sure that we are not using disparaging, obscene, insulting language or personal attacks. Here, making that, I also want to just mention real quick, the, some new faces here tonight. If we would have, at any time we have one of these meetings in this chamber, if we would have bad weather, the police officers here and city staff would help escort everyone down the hallway, through the lobby, right across from the clerk's office, there's some stairs going downstairs to a basement area that is deemed to be a good place to be in the case of severe weather. If we had a fire, or smoke, or some other reason to evacuate the building, we would ask that you go out the front door, carefully cross the street, and meet over by the sign, the St. Clair County sign, so that we can kind of make sure that everybody is, is present, and kind of get a count, and to the fire department would come and check the building. So just those couple of notes about our safety. At this time, I will open public participation and see who would like to comment. Yes, ma'am?
Lily and Schneider, 219 Kansas Avenue, Belleville. I was contacted by a person, and I think instead of taking time for words of the month about telling the public when they have to speak would be a better idea. There is something, if there's something on the agenda, they should be told they have to speak during public participation and not wait until it is on the agenda, like it has happened before. It would also be helpful, the aldermen would help attend zoning board meetings. At one of the previous zoning board meetings, there were no aldermen there to represent a person from Ward One. And this would just be helpful, and I think it should be required, at least one alderman from each ward, if there's something at the zoning board, that one alderman should be required, doesn't have to be both of them, but at least one attend the zoning board meeting and help talk to the people. It would be very helpful. An alderman should also set the examples of the way this, they conduct and act for the city of Belleville, versus if it's city, their yards, their house, whatever. And I just think it would be very helpful to the citizens. And I also will be turning in a FOIA tomorrow for the sewer bills of all sixteen aldermen to see how many have been late and been sent water shut-off notices. It's my tax money and any of the other citizens here that pay taxes that make the salary. When I was an alderman, I made sure I did my part and earned my money. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir. Your turn, Sheriff.
My name is Jim Corderon. I live on sixteen thirty-six North Charles, and this is in regards to the used car lot you want to put on our corner. I emailed everybody in here. I have pictures to show the street, the ditches, and everything that, the reason why we don't want this, kids are going to get hurt, kids are going to school on this street. Can I pass these out?
Yes, sir.
And then also, in front of this, one sixty-one used car lot, there's a used car lot, not fifty yards from this. We already have one on our neighborhood. We don't need another. You can just look in the front yard and see the other used car lot. There are no, there are no fire hydrants in that block. They're on the other side of the highway, a block down the street. If there was a fire there, they got to drag this hole across the highway and block the highway. There's no sidewalks on our street, none whatsoever. There's three foot ditches on each side, cars parked on both sides of the street. Children got to walk in the middle of the street to go to school, a block down the street, and it's not a good sight. There's three businesses right there, me being one of them, and we have trucks coming in and out there four, five, six times a day. And across the street from me, behind this car lot, there is a landscaping business, and he has trucks in there from six in the morning to six at night, in and out. I mean, backhoes, trackhoes, trailers, and it's constant movement over there. And it's all in front of this used car lot, in front of our house, where he wants to direct his traffic by blocking off the front of the road. On one sixty-one, he wants to block that off and divert all the traffic into his business on our street where all the kids walk. Our main concern is the safety of these kids going to school. It hasn't happened yet, that the kids have gotten hit by a car, but it's going to happen. And then I'm glad this is under surveillance, that we can show you that we don't approve of this. We got twenty signatures on this, this ballot from our neighborhood, and we stood up and spoke, that we want, we don't want this in our neighborhood. That people have spoken in our neighborhood. What else can we do?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening have a comment? Yes, sir. We'll start with him, and then we'll work over the next one.
My name's Tom Whissler. I live at sixteen fifty-nine North Charles, right next to Jim Corderon, speaking on the same issue. And at the risk of being a little redundant, there's two, I think, main reasons why we really don't want this lot there. One is concerns for safety, like Jim said. The other is concern for our property value. That intersection is incredibly congested with vehicles all the time, and especially mid to late afternoon when these kids are getting out of school. It's a four-lane road, the, the traffic, the cars go way faster than the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit because the road merges just to the east of this lot, and everybody's just trying to beat everybody else to that merge lane. It's, it's terrible. They're, they're, they're going ten, fifteen miles over the limit. They're going fifty miles an hour times. There's, you know, and if you add this lot to that incredible situation already, I think you're just going to compound it. If you, just, public going in and out of there at that time, people test-driving cars that they're not familiar with, with kids all over the place, it just, to me, it just compounds an already bad situation. And as far as the property value goes, as Jim said, there's a, a shabby excuse for a car lot about a block away, which most people have seen. There's a couple of cars in there, and they wash cars, they repair cars, again zoning codes. There's a used car, a used tire place a few blocks down the road, that's an embarrassment to the neighborhood and probably to the city. It's a joke. There's tires piled twenty feet in the air. We're just afraid that this could develop into that same situation. We're worried about that. And one final note, Mr. Patterson, who wants to put this lot there, he, he routinely comes, he takes and picks up cars at this little lot down the street. And on the side of one of his tow trucks, there's a sign, and it says, "We buy junk cars." Now, where do you think those cars are going to end up if he gets approval for this lot? That's all I have to say.
Okay, next? Yes, sir. Your turn.
Store Atlanta, three eighteen South Twenty-Eight Ninth Street, Belleville. Lindenwood, this is property that, thanks to Dorothy Meyer, who seconded the motion, it was not even, Lindenwood didn't even buy it from Belleville. Belleville gave it to Lindenwood. It's from where that little white hobby shop used to be on, right by the railroad tracks on Twenty-seventh Street or thereabouts. And now it's called, part of that property, part of it's a blacktop parking lot, and the other part is just grass. And on your maps, you get at City Hall, or Courthouse, one portion is called Lindenwood University, and the other portion is called Lindenwood Corporation. I just wonder what's the difference between, I thought it was all Lindenwood University, but here they got, one portion is called Uni, Lindenwood Corporation, and I don't know the difference. I think we should, Fire, Fire Chief, Fire Chief Clay, the new Belleville patch that he was so proud of violates the flag ethic of this country by having the city and the American flag fly at the same heights and be in the same height, uh, same size and flying at the same heights. The American flag is always supposed to fly above any other flag. And there was eighty-six thousand dollars stolen from the bicentennial party. I guess we'll never see that. And this historic Engelman Park, I just read about today. Most people don't even know where it's at. They don't even, haven't even heard of it, but it cost the taxpayers four point six million, thirty-two thousand an acre.
Stuart, that's in the county.
Okay, but this all costs our tax money. It's our tax money.
Okay, but, you know, that, that remark you might want to take to a county board meeting.
They're useless down there. And then Clay Barn is appointed as girlfriend to a three, to a-
Stuart.
And she owes three hundred thousand in student loans. My lawyer told me that, he said Lindenwood, he's worried about Lindenwood. He said Lindenwood is cramming all these students into this college, and then when they graduate, they're going to have a huge student loan hanging over their head and no jobs. I know a couple of Lindenwood graduates, the best they can get is bartending jobs, so I don't know if Lindenwood, what are, who's going to pay for these student loans? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jason Corderon. I live at sixteen fifty-five North Charles. I have the same issue with the nine thirteen Sherman Avenue permit for a used car lot. Not going to repeat what they said. I, I've lived in the neighborhood my entire life, as long with my father and our family. I plan on inheriting the property, and I moved to the area to live and grow my family. I have two children. I take care of myself. And my front yard is directly in front of this, and the lighting is going to be inside my house. The safety reasons they brought up, my main thing is crime. This area is crime-ridden. Cars are being broken into, houses are being burglarized. There's people derelict walking all over the, the streets. You can't set anything outside of our house. If I set a bag of aluminum cans outside my back door, it's gone within twenty minutes. This is going to draw, it's going to put eighteen cars on a lot that aren't going to be supervised after nine o'clock, except for with some lights. It's going to draw all kinds of crime. Kelso Autobody down the street has had sixty-five batteries stolen off of campers in two years. My lot has had, my trash can stolen. Anything I set outside, neighbors' lots, the lot directly to the right of it, at sixteen, I think thirty-nine North Char, or North Charles, is, had two vehicles robbed from that property in a year's period. I think we're adding more fuel to the fire with it, and I would hope our signatures in the neighborhood would set some type of standard for what we want in our neighborhood, and not what, and I understand it's tax revenue, and the city needs it, but we don't want it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing that, I'm going to close public participation. We're going to move on to the next portion of the meeting, which at this time is a presentation, and I would like to ask Charlie Kramer and anyone else from the board, or he, whoever else is here tonight, from Community Kindness, to please come forward, and I will present this proclamation. Come forward. Charlie?
Welcome.
Turn around here, we'll read this. Proclamation states, whereas in nineteen ninety-five, three people holding Community Kindness resale shops in efforts to make our communities a better place to live, work, and raise advantage, and enjoy life by sharing some time and talents they might have with others, who also felt like doing the same thing. And whereas over the last twenty years, local residences and businesses have doubled in size and big additions to Community Kindness resale shop, and then other residences have purchased items at high cost. Whereas proceeds from Community Kindness supports several different charities who serve our neighborhoods. And whereas volunteer staff maintains and continues to develop a thirty thousand square foot Community Kindness resale shop located in five hundred East Main Street, as outstanding improvements have been noticed downtown in this area. And whereas the mission statement of Community Kindness Inc. is to recognize the need and raise funds for five oh one C three agencies, organizations, and projects of this St. Clair County that enable them to improve their community standard of living, provide jobs, expand their goods work, and recover from crisis. And whereas Community Kindness resale shop has thrived due to the efforts of General Manager and Founder Charlie Kramer, and many volunteers, the Board of Directors, and the support of the community. Now therefore, I mark accurate city of Belleville to hereby recognize and congratulate Community Kindness Inc. for twenty years of unarrogant service to the city of Belleville and St. Clair County area by supporting those who help others. Charlie, I want to present this to you, your board. As mentioned in here, the building was the old Sears Farm Store, and when they took over, it was in, in fact, I'll be honest with you, I had reservations how much they were going to be able to do. And they had done everything our staff, from a safety standpoint, has wanted, and they have done aesthetically. They have made some major strides. They have been involved in the Downtown Main Street program. They've been involved in community projects. And places like Franklin Neighborhood and many other organizations have benefited from their generosity and their donations each year. So while we, we always, we have our concerns sometimes, when sometimes a resale shop wants to pop up, and they're in and out for a short time, and this one here has been here for the long haul. You guys have worked together. I know there's churches and a lot of good people behind it. And you have made a significant contribution to downtown and to many individuals. You helped them and to many organizations, so please, one applause and say thanks.
Very impressed by the response, and thank you all very kindly. A group of us that all have put our shoulders to the wheel to try to make this a better community. Slowly, we're, our little area, we're improving it, and watching what's happening to the town, it's really a wonderful thing. It's something to be proud of. And we love this town. We work hard for it, and it's working. You're doing good. Thank you, Dad.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, we move on to the regular portion of the minutes, meeting. We have the approval of the Menace City Council from August third. What's your pleasure?
Motion to receive and file in the minutes.
I will recognize Alderman Seibert for motion to receive and file, and second by Alderman Elmore. Discussion on the minutes. Yes, sir.
There's a section on page four out of nine, if you want, if you care to look at it. It says that at line six, it says, "As long as she has known Rose Wilson, she has always worked tirelessly for the good of the city and does not like to have her character..." S A G E D. I don't know what that word is. And I would ask that the clerk's office just find out what was said, because I don't know what it, what it's supposed to be.
I think it was his office.
Okay, we'll check in a minute. Okay? Very good.
But I, I would be willing to approve the minutes with that.
With that, with that correction being looked at, okay? Anything else? Mr. White?
Yes, did you get my correction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I don't have anything, sir.
Do we need to note that in the approval?
Yeah, I guess. It was just for the zoning board item, went for Reichardt's big request. It was mentioned, but the vote wasn't mentioned in there, but it was passed.
Okay, okay, so we got that noted as well.
Right.
Okay, with those comments, all in favor, signify by saying aye to have them accepted and filed.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we have the claims, payroll, and disbursements. There was a, brought up to my attention that we wanted to be broke down. Can certainly do that. First of all, there's a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, three oh two and sixty-one cents. Then the payroll, period ending August seventh, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of eight hundred forty-three thousand, eight twenty-seven and forty-nine. I, I guess there's no problem if we make one motion to approve them, but they wanted to see the breakdown. Do I hear a motion to make these payments? Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a treasurer's report dated July two thousand fifteen, a statement of cash and investments. What's your pleasure?
I move we accept and file them.
We have a motion to accept and file. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Tyler. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of this motion to accept and file, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oral reports, motion from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Clerk?
Sure. Eleven A one, motion to amend to ordinance seventy-eight seventy-three, a zoning ordinance in regard to case number eighteen, June fifteenth, McBride, McBride, Green Mount Manor LLC.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Galetti, to approve and have the proper ordinance drawn, reference this case A one, eleven A one. Any further discussion? All in favor of having this ordinance approved and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to a motion from the Planning Commission. McBride, Green Mount Manor LLC, consideration of the final plat, of the final phase of Green Mount Manor, a subdivision in a C four commercial district located at zero Commons Parkway. Applicable section of the zoning code is sixty dash four dash six, Ward seven.
I move we approve this.
We have motion, we have a second by, motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Elmore, to approve the zoning, the Planning Commission's recommendation. Discussion, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to amend this emotion for this first one, a motion to approve the bid of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six from Rush Truck Centers for purchase of a new sanitation truck. So moved.
Okay, one thirty-eight, one fifty-six?
Yes.
Was there a change?
Yes, yes, sir.
What was the change? I think it was just one thirty-eight, one fifty-six.
Is that correct?
Any change?
No, it was just one thirty-eight, one fifty-six.
Okay, zero, okay, that's, I didn't, that's what I didn't hear. I never know, some of these bids, twenty-five cents, who knows? Uh, okay, we have a motion to, um, this is the second lowest bidder, and I guess, we have a motion by Alderman Sillsby. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert. Way I understand this is, um, the one that was, uh, and I don't, it's just a matter, it was just a bit of a misread here. They made it pretty clear, we felt that we were looking for an international truck, because most of our trucks are international, we have a lot of parts, and we have an international repair service here in Belleville. This truck that was from Downing, it has to go out into St. Louis County, I believe. If we have to have any repairs or have it towed, it's going to greatly cost us pretty rapidly. And, and when it was reviewed, there was just some confusion. They thought they had the international. There's four thousand dollars difference from these two bids, but they feel like if there's any substantial repairs or towing, it's going to go quick from that distance. And manpower of people going over to pick it up or take it back or whatever. So that's the reason, and we have a motion, and we have a second, to change the lowest, most responsible bidding, and bid, and the, and the opinion of the staff after a final review. Any further discussion by the council after that explanation? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion to approve various public bid improvement bids at seven twenty West Main Street to low bidders, as shown in the bid result packet. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear discussion on this? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. And finally?
Motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Alderman White, Traffic Committee?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like permission to read all these as a group and vote for them as a group.
Nobody objects, do they? Proceed as a group.
Thank you, Your Honor. Eleven D one, motion to delete the two-way stop on Roosevelt Avenue and at South Twentieth Street. Eleven D two, motion to create a four-way stop at Twentieth and Roosevelt Avenue. Eleven D three, motion to delete the no-parking fire lane on the east side of Timothy Lane. And finally, eleven D four, motion to create no-parking fire lane on the west side of Timothy Lane, and have the proper ordinance drawn. So moved.
Motion from Alderman White, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tyler. Do I hear discussion on these motions? All in favor of approving these motions and have the proper ordinances drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Streets and Grades, Alderman Seibert.
Yes, sir. Streets and Grades, and the city engineer, a motion to peruse the estimated estimate of mo, of maintenance from two fifty, twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen on a motor fuel tax for one million, eight hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Seibert. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White. Discussion on that motion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dettelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. We go to page four.
Yes.
Okay, flip it right, okay. Moving along here. We have motions from Ardenance and Legal Review Committee. Alderman Musgrove.
We have first of eleven F one, motion to approve amending chapter twenty-four, section twenty-four dash one dash six of the electrical code. We going to do these all in one?
Does anybody have objection if we do them together? Let's proceed, yes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Did we vote in that committee on number two?
Um...
I thought Garrett was going to do some sort of research on that.
Well, number two, and it gave me...
Oh, there was a vote, and I was provided direction on what to add, and I added it in the, in the proposal amendment.
Your Honor, some discussion on two? Can we talk about that right now, or do you want to wait?
We can go, let's, let's vote on number one. There might be some discussion on two. If we want to do the last two together, we can do that. We have a motion and a second on, on eleven F one. Do I hear, we have a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Hazel, second by Alderman Consilla, to approve ardenance, approve from the Ardenance Legal Review Committee their recommendation for this ardenance, and we have a second. Any discussion on this one about the electrical code? It's a recommendation coming from the Electrical Committee to, to the Ardenance Committee. Any discussion? All in favor of this improve, this change, and have the proper ardenance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a recommendation coming from the electrical committee to, to the ordinance committee. Any discussion? All in favor of this improve, this change, and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go to the next one.
11F2, motion to approve amending provisions in the video gaming license article, XXVII, section 727-1.
Do I hear a motion and a second? Motion to make, approve this, do I hear a second? Second, second by Alderman Cincilla, motion was by Alderman Schmidt. Before we go further, Garrett, why don't I just ask you to kind of explain?
Sure. The ordinance and legal committee, over the course of a few meetings, had discussions concerning the video gaming issues associated with convenience stores and with what I'll call gaming parlors. Sometimes you see these storefront operations that, that, that will attempt to obtain a liquor license and, and have five machines and maybe a small concession area. But it, it's a enterprise that is predominantly gaming-driven and less food and beverage-driven. So, going through the, the proposed amendments, the first to section 7-19-15, that's the convenience store code, so there was a provision added in there, making it clear that a convenience store shall not conduct video gaming. Section 2 addresses the video gaming license standard, and it restricts, first in part E, that the city's issuance of video gaming stickers shall be, the eligibility for that shall be restricted to establishments that derive at least 50% of their gross monthly revenues from food, beverage, and/or other non-gaming sales. This is similar to, conceptually, to what the city of Springfield did in 2014. Section F restricts the eligibility for the issuance of a video gaming sticker to somebody with a packaged liquor license, a Class C license, which is, Class C is packaged, sealed package, not consumed on the premises. And then moving to section 3, similarly, this part P is another, is within the liquor code, and it contains the same restriction that an establishment to be eligible for a liquor license has to derive more than 50% of its gross monthly revenue from license, or cannot derive it more than 50% from video gaming. Then moving down to the Class C portion of section 21-1-8, we similarly added in there that the holder of a Class C license shall not conduct video gaming. That's, that would be, a packaged liquor would be similar to the convenience store. And that is all the amendments. But again, they're, they're intended to restrict and prohibit video gaming in convenience stores and, and establishments that are essentially more reliant on video gaming than, than other business. They think the ordinance and legal committee intended to make sure that video gaming was ancillary and not primary.
There was a number of requests to come to my office in the last six months, and that's why we took this to the ordinance committee. There was some, certainly a lot of interest to try to get a couple convenience stores to, they wanted to know what they had to do to get a poor license, and, and I told them that that was never what I interpreted as the intent of video gaming. And there was some of these storefront operations that were inquiring. So we felt it was time that we fine-tuned this, because in our belief, in the discussion with the committee as well, that was not the intent of video gaming. It was, it was to go into the bars and restaurants, that, that was, you know, that was not going to be their primary source. And so that's why we proposed this tonight. Is there any other, do we have a motion and a second on this already?
Yes.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
You made it, who was the second? Cincilla, okay. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Tyler.
Does this affect any of our current licensed holders?
No.
No, and, and the data that, that we had seen from these, what I'll call the parlors, it, it was more like 90-something percent was gaming and single digits, so I don't think it, it will affect. And if it did, it's something that could be addressed by grandfathering if necessary.
We haven't had a problem, to my knowledge, there's not been anyone brought anything to my attention as a liquor commissioner, but with these recent last six months or last year, I mean, we even had one guy wanted to put video gaming in his laundromat. I mean, so it's kind of just getting, I mean, I, I'll give him credit for being creative, but I mean, it's getting a little bit to the point where we felt we had to do something to make it clear that, you know, this is what the intent was, and this is how we're operating in Belleville. Any further discussion? I'm going to, and understand that this motion was to approve these amendments as recommended by the ordinance committee and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of this motion and send it for the, have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If we want to do the last two together, Jim, I think we can.
Motion, 11F-3, motion to approve amending rental license ordinance to include certification from applicant that they are the bona fide representative, not a felon, article 18. 11F4, motion to approve amending chapter 31, parks and recreation regarding trail guidelines.
We have a motion coming from the committee from Alderman Musgrove, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear discussion?
The trail guidelines?
Jason Poole, I knew I brought you here for a reason. What is it?
Did you?
Trail guidelines.
Okay, there were some, some, we have park ordinances, and most of the trails, before they've been expanded, were all in parks, so our park ordinances also pertain to the trails. Well, there's sections, since the trails have been expanded, that are outside of our park boundaries. That's where the trail guidelines came into play.
So this picks up where the park, park jurisdiction would leave, and where the, for example, where the trails would take off from North End Park, let's say, and go all the way down through Metro Lincoln, all the way out, you know, it, it just gives some jurisdiction of those guidelines, where, when it's going through South Side Park, or it's going through Huff Park, or it's going through Rotary Park, they, they have the, the park ordinances are a substance for, for jurisdiction. But we had to do this because we realized that with the expanded trail network, we had areas that weren't covered far as governing, if the police department had to deal with them.
But this doesn't put us on accepting maintenance of them, does it?
Mainly, it pertains to like the Signal Hill Trail that we're already maintaining. The Bellevue to Citizens Trail, okay, like I said, the Bellevue and Citizens Park are obviously parks, but between the two, we're maintaining those, those are our trails. What else? Right now, those is too, and eventually, we're going to have connectors to those also. But no, as far as the transit district section goes, that's still...
They still got the maintenance.
Correct, yes.
They're still supposed to be the ones maintaining.
Yes. Any other questions on this, this particular one? So we have, thank you, Jason.
There are motions.
We have a motion for to approve these two recommendations coming from ordinance and have the proper ordinance drawn. If there's no further questions, all in favor of the motions?
Do we have a second?
We have a second. You were, you made a motion, and Roger made a second. If there's no further questions, all in favor of approving these two motions and have the proper ordinances drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have communications.
12A, the Belleville Area Humane Society is requesting to hold their annual Race for Rescues 5K and One Mile Fun Walk to be held at Bellevue West High School on Sunday, October 4th, 2015. They are requesting to close Bellevue West Parkway from Frank Scott Parkway to Route 15 from 8:45 until 10:15 a.m. They are requesting a police officer to close the intersection from 8:45 to 9:45, and understand there's an approximate charge of $50 for that service. They would also like to request the use of 15 barricades and 20 cones from the street department. They would also like six barricades delivered to the intersection of Route 15 and Bellevue West Parkway, and the other nine barricades and cones delivered to the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and Bellevue West Parkway. These can be delivered on Friday, October 3rd, and picked up on Monday, October 6th.
I hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Tyler, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert, do I hear any discussion? All in favor of approving this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution 3237 and 3238.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on reading those two resolutions by title only? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a problem reading them together?
No.
Go ahead, proceed.
14A, resolution number 3237, a resolution amending the annual budget of 2015 to 2016 regarding the treasurer's office. 14B, resolution number 3238, a resolution amending the annual budget 2015, 2016. Library, special service area, narcotics, 2015 PD project debt service, and 2015 PD project construction.
Motion to approve resolution 3237 and 3238, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion to approve various public bid improvement bids at 720 West Main Street to low bidders as shown in the bid result packet, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Cincilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to ordinances, so there'd be no need to read an ordinance approving, do we need a motion at all? No, no motion, that, strike that, ordinance number 7879. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance 7885, 7886, 7887, 7888, 7889, and 7890.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second by Alderman Diddleman, do I hear discussion?
All in favor of reading those, our, 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 as stated by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I guess, is, was there any of you want to break out of here, is there anybody has an issue with any of them?
No.
Read them together.
Ordinance number 7879, an ordinance approving, I'm sorry, that one is skipped. Ordinance number 7885, an ordinance amending chapter 24, electrical code, the revised code of ordinances of Bellevue, Illinois is amended by amending portions of sections thereof. Ordinance number 7886, an ordinance amending chapter 7, business license, articles 19 and article 27, chapter 21 of liquor code, the revised code of ordinances of Bellevue, Illinois is amended by amending portions of sections thereof. 16D, ordinance number 7887, an ordinance amending chapter 7, article 27 of the revised code of ordinances of Bellevue, Illinois is amended by amending portions of sections thereof. 16F, ordinance number 7889, an ordinance amending chapter 52 of the traffic code of the revised